Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Welcome to the October 27th meeting of the Board of Education. The Durham Public Schools Board of Education is now convened in its regular monthly meeting. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and our television viewers to this meeting of the school board. Tonight's agenda promises to be rich with information that will support and enhance our vision statement. Standing committees of the board will present information and reports that will keep you informed on what the district is doing to ensure that our vision of success for every child is being realized. The board invites public comment at the beginning of the board meeting and before each agenda item. Board members will carefully listen and consider the comments from the public, but the board does not engage in a discussion with speakers. Thank you for taking the time to join us, and we are glad you are with us. We generally, we start out our meetings with a moment of silence, and during this moment of silence, I'd ask for everyone to just kind of keep in mind our country as we go to the polls. Think about what this election means to our country, to each of us, and it's not just a presidential election, it's the local elections, it is the state elections that in some regards are even more important than the presidential election. So if you join me in a moment of silence and think about our country as we vote. And I do hope everyone here has voted. If you're eligible, please, you know, early voting is going on right now. They have extended hours, so there's no excuse for anyone to not vote. And if you don't vote, you can't complain for the next four years. All right? So that's what being American is, that's what being part of the community is. All right, so we will go on to celebrations.
And we are pleased to welcome many of our families from our schools this evening. Just for the general public, before most board meetings during the year, we invite families from up to six, seven of our schools to come eat with us so that we can talk about what's working, some areas for improvement, and we were excited tonight to have several families with us. And we also like to thank at this time the excellent culinary program at Northern High who caters meals for us and caters meals in the community, and I heard tonight is harder to book than like the Duke Gardens for a wedding or something. So call them for your events next year. All right, so we would like to welcome the families that came with us. I'll call out the school, and if those families would come down, shake the board's hand, except for the superintendent, who is under the weather and will elbow bump you to show his appreciation. All right. So first, our families from the City of Medicine Academy. Jordan High School, if you'd join us this way, so we can get you on camera the right Good evening. It's my pleasure to introduce the rest of the celebrations portion of this evening's meeting when we have an opportunity to recognize some outstanding students tonight. Tonight's first celebration is the Durham Herald Sun and Durham Public Schools Student of the Month. This program spotlights students who distinguish themselves with character and integrity, who are active in their schools and community, and who maintain excellent academic standards. I'd like to ask Gloria Woods Weeks, Principal of J.D. Clement Early College High School on the campus of North Carolina Central University, to come up and introduce our Student of the Month.
As principal of the Early College, my first interaction with Mr. Ivan Rosales was during the summer bridge program for incoming freshmen at the Early College. I observed him to be respectful, intelligent, and charismatic amongst his peers. I was impressed with his ability to take leadership in his group and the positive way he encouraged his fellow group members. As a freshman at the Early College, his teachers were fascinated with his intuitive critical thinking skills and his diligence to maintain excellent grades. His peers were fascinated with his outgoing, mature, and very kind nature. When Ivan first received his diagnosis of cancer in January, he was very quick to seek guidance for implementing a plan to ensure his continued success at the Early College. He did not want to fall behind in his studies. During the many conversations we had, I would say to him, "Please do not worry about your studies at this time. I need you to focus on your recovery and getting well." But his schoolwork was always at the forefront of everything else that was going on. Ivan's determination and positive attitude is contagious to all he meets. He is recognized by our school family for his resilience and ability to stay focused and persistence regardless of any obstacles he is presented with. After two surgeries, chemotherapy, and only half days of schooling, Ivan remains an honor roll, an A honor roll student with ambition and aspirations of attending North Carolina State University where he will study environmental engineering. Ladies and gentlemen, it gives me great pleasure to introduce Mr. Ivan Rosales as the October Herald Sun DPS Student of the Month.
I would now like to ask Durham Public Schools Athletic Director Larry McDonald to come up and introduce our next celebration.
Thank you so much to Dr. Lahm and the members of the Board of Education for Durham Public Schools. It's a great pleasure to bring this young man to the forefront of things here in Durham. He has exceeded excellently academically and athletically despite having some setbacks when he was born. We're so glad tonight to have with us Mr. Desmond Jackson, and I'm gonna ask Mina Ferguson Brown, excuse me, I'm thinking, Mina, to come and to read the bio on Desmond.
Since he was born. This is an honor. Desmond Jackson was selected to the 2016 United States Paralympic Track and Field Team as the youngest male on the team to compete in Rio de Janeiro. He competed in the 100 meters, the 200 meters, and the long jump. Desmond finished first out of all three United States competitors in the 100 meters, but overall Desmond placed seventh in the world for long jump. And ninth in the world for the 100 meters. The competition was stiff as Desmond competed against athletes who range in age from 25 to 38. Desmond was also just named to the 2016 United States Paralympics Track and Field All-American Unit for the third time. He is preparing to compete in the World Games, which will take place in London, July 2017, and he is ramping up his training to target Tokyo in 2020. Desmond Andre Jackson. You can hug your auntie, honey.
Just in case I failed to mention, Desmond is a student at Hillside IB. Under the leadership of Dr. William Logan and his high school coach is here, Coach C. Please stand.
Ladies and gentlemen, that completes our celebrations for the night.
All right. All right, that is great. Before we, the next on the list is the superintendent's update, but I just wanted to wish a welcome to our newest board member. This is our first full board meeting. Bettina Umstead, we are very glad to have you. Congratulations on being appointed, and I hope you enjoy your time here. Did you wanna, do you wanna say anything?
I'm very thankful to be here.
All right, that works too. Okay, and superintendent's update is next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I start, Desmond Jackson, I hope you caught it. Not only is he an athlete, he's a scholar. And being a scholar-athlete, that is the top of the pile. Board members, I am under the weather and full of cough medicine and cough drops, so I'm going to be very brief in tonight's remarks. And I hope she's still here. I want to lead off with how proud I was of our three high schools with 100% graduation rates that were honored at a luncheon this week with State Superintendent June Atkinson. What delighted me about the luncheon was how competitive our principals were with each other, comparing notes on how many years their schools have hit 100%. By the way, Early College High School has gone to that banquet four times. We recognized these three schools earlier in the year, but I want to again congratulate the teachers, staff, faculty, and especially students of J.D. Clement Early College High School, City of Medicine Academy, and Middle College at Durham Tech. And also, by the way, City of Medicine Academy in its size, of zero to 100 graduates, was second in the state. Hear that, guys? Second in the state. And Middle College at Durham Tech. Hillside New Tech only missed 100% by one student, which means that they had a 98% graduation rate. And of our comprehensive high schools, DSA also had a graduation rate of 90%. Over the last week, the issue of student free expression has come up regarding the National Anthem, and I want to share some thoughts. We play the anthem before our games to honor our country, and we, of course, will continue to do so. How our students react to the anthem, however, is a matter of free expression. I am less concerned with whether our students kneel or stand during the anthem than I am that all of our students treat each other with dignity, respect, before, during, and after the anthem. Our policies are clear, that students' free expression must be respected as long as it does not disrupt the learning environment or infringe on others. And our experiences in Durham did not disrupt, but they made the point. We are welcoming superintendents tomorrow to Durham from the 10 larger school districts in North Carolina. And it's traditional that we provide a little token of Durham, you know? And a lot of times you get all sorts of bling and swag and stuff like that, but that's not what we're gonna do. I want you to know, I want to show off Durham Public Schools, and I want to show off Durham Public Schools with three books. Is that the first book I'm giving them is by our teacher, Stuart Albright, at Jordan High School, who wrote A World Beyond Home, and the excellent literary anthologies from both the Durham School of the Arts and Lowes Grove. I'd also like to congratulate Judy Hillyard, music teacher at Easely Elementary, who is a semifinalist for the Grammy Foundation National Music Educator Award. Congratulations to Wendell Tab, Hillside's drama teacher, who received the Sister Cities of Durham Mayor's Award for Promoting International Understanding last week, and whose opening night gala next week for the musical The Wiz will be graced with the presence of leviaginary Broadway choreographer Dr. George Thazan. Finally, members of the legislative Black Caucus toured three of our schools, Parkwood Elementary, Lowes Grove Middle School, and Early College High School. They were joined by members of the Board of Education and members of the Board of County Commissioners. This all happened on October 11th. Our students and staff really made us proud to show off those schools, because when they walked into those schools, not only they see grade school buildings, they also saw talented teachers, engaged students, and learning going on all over our district. So I want to thank our students and staff for that visit last week. And that, Mr. Chair, concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lahm. Next on the agenda is the Agenda Review and Approval. Board members, does this agenda meet with your approval? Are there any additions? Hearing none, I will accept a motion.
Move approval of the agenda.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the agenda as presented before us. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please use the same sign. Passes unanimously. The next is general public comment. Thank you very much. Okay. All right. Oh, okay, so we have 11 signed up for general public comment. Yeah, three minutes. All right. We'll grant three minutes each. The first one is Jevanya Lewis. Okay, did I say that right? Jevanya, all right. Jevanya Lewis.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Jevanya Lewis, and I am a parent of two boys at George Watts Montessori Elementary School. George Watts Elementary School has become a focused school. This means that Black and Hispanic testing scores in math and reading are significantly lower than white students' scores, and it has been this way for three consecutive years. There are also five other diverse schools in our districts that have been labeled as focused schools, and we feel like this is not acceptable. In June 2016, the PTA at Watts helped to organize a meeting of parents of African-American students to share the data, openly talk about the overwhelmingly shocking data of the achievement gap, and find solutions to the problem, find solutions to give our children better opportunities. At this meeting, the PAC was formed, Parents of African-American Children. PAC is a group of parents, teachers, and administrators whose mission is to eliminate the achievement gap. Some people would like to say that socioeconomic and parental engagement plays a major role in children of color not being able to proficiently pass the EOG and the test grade, end of grade testing, and I have to raise my hand to say, that's not my situation. I am fortunate to not be economically disadvantaged, and I am an active, involved parent. However, my son began the second grade above reading level. Mid-year, he had regressed and was behind low at the end of second grade. It was unbelievable and unacceptable. The only difference is race, and no one wants to talk about that. There were many obstacles for even the parents of African-American families to come together to have a meeting to talk about the issues at hand. As a parent of an African-American child, I would like to hear from the board on three points. One, what are you doing to reform focused schools so all of these schools are more achieving for the children of color? Two, what resources are you going to give teachers and staff so that they are better equipped to know their blinders and/or white economic privilege to work effectively with Black and Brown children, raise the bar? And third, the North Carolina Forum published last Thursday has made recommendations dealing with racial equity, and one of them was to create district equity departments with executive level leadership. There are only a few districts in North Carolina that have prioritized equity, diversity, or inclusion to the extent that they have dedicated this level of specific support for it. Districts must begin to place district leaders in charge of elevating the issues, providing anti-racism training, monitoring data for racial disparity, and holding schools accountable for equitable outcomes. Currently, there are fewer than five districts out of 115 in North Carolina that have such a dedicated Department of Leadership role. I would like to know, showing a commitment to equity in our education system, will you begin to create an Equity Officer position for us like the other five school districts in North Carolina to address equity in education as recommended by the North Carolina Forum Study? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Our next speaker is Lanya Shapiro.
Lanya Shapiro, I also have two sons, and I'm a member of the Watts Parents of African-American Children. I have one son that is in kindergarten at Watts and one son that will probably be in pre-K next year at Watts. I just wanted to sort of give some context, which I'm sure many of you know, but just thank you for indulging me, that Black and Brown kids, but particularly Black kids at Watts are not only suffering an opportunity gap, but there is really a shrinking number of African-American children at Watts. My understanding is that historically Watts was an all-black school, and that shortly before it became a magnet school in 2004, it was about 50/50. I might be wrong about this, but this is my, this is my general sense. And at some point, you know, and it was turned into a magnet partly in an effort to attract more white families to stay in DPS. And to a great degree, it's been considered a success on that measure, by that measure. But perhaps due to the wonderful school that we have, and perhaps, I think, very likely due to that, and very likely due to the demographics shifting in the neighborhoods around the school, the student body has trended white, and the teachers and the administration have really changed too. If you look at the pictures from long ago at Watts, it's very different. In my own child's pre-K and K class, there was one, by sight, one African-American child. Now that my son is in kindergarten and there's a new pre-K class, and there are no African-American children, there are two biracial children in that class, which to me is shocking given Durham's demographics and even, you know, Walltown's demographics. And my understanding is that this, my son's class, it was 60% white, 25, 26% Latino, 8% African-American. So while I think for DPS as a whole, it is, I'm sure, a success to bring in white families, but my question to you is, at what point is that demographic breakdown within a DPS school still considered a success? I think many of us feel very good about Watts. There are some serious questions about the quality of education that some children are getting there, but I think we have a lot of families of all colors that are very dedicated to the school and to making it succeed. So the question is, is this still a success, and how will you focus on diversity and equity for the children in Watts and other focused schools? Thanks.
Thank you very much, Ms. Shapiro. Our next, our next speaker is Robin Furman.
My name is Robin Furman. Thank you for the time tonight. I'm speaking tonight as a DPS parent of white children, and I'm standing in solidarity with the George Watts Parents of African-American Children's Group. My daughter is currently a second grader at George Watts, and I'm hopeful that my son will be attending pre-K there next year. I am incredibly grateful and profoundly humbled by the tireless work that teachers and staff at George Watts put in every single day. And yet, as you all know, and certainly as the parents who are in this room know, our school is simply not working for everyone. I'm here tonight because I'm concerned about the gaps in academic opportunity and achievement along racial lines that are persistent at George Watts and all other DPS schools. I fundamentally believe that solving this issue must be the highest priority of this board. In addition to this simply being a critical moral issue, I am concerned about the negative impact this racial opportunity gap is having on my own, on white children, including my own. As you all know, children notice everything. I am worried about the harmful messages my white daughter may be internalizing as she sees mostly white children in the highest reading groups and mostly white children in her AIG classes. Despite our family's best efforts to teach her otherwise, will she grow up with the belief that white people are simply smarter than people of color? Will her own implicit bias be strengthened as a result of her DPS education instead of confronted and dismantled? I believe that these persistent gaps in academic opportunity along racial lines and the messages that white children will internalize because of them make my child more likely to cause racially motivated harm in the future and fail to adequately prepare her as the culturally competent leader that our current and future world needs. Throughout progressive white Durham, I often hear the cry, "We heart public schools." I wouldn't be a DPS parent if I didn't love them too. But what I love more are schools that are truly opening the doors of equitable opportunity for all children. My questions for the board tonight are, what are you doing to specifically ensure that Black and Brown children succeed at Watts? And how will the board address racial disparities to access to academically gifted programs? What the data shows us is that changing this course is not a matter of possibility, it is a matter of will. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Elizabeth. Our next speaker is Elizabeth Lindquist.
I have to move this, I'm a little taller. Can you still hear me? Okay. Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Lindquist, and I am the PTA President at George Watts. And I'm here tonight, I'm going to shift the focus for a moment, but don't worry, it's going to shift back after I finish. I'm here because of the board's approval of the sliding fee scale for pre-K at Watts and Morehead. I support universal pre-K. It should be funded by the tax base. If the political will is not there to move that forward, and this is the best we can do for now to increase access to pre-K, I support it. However, I and many other parents at Watts have been concerned for many years by the decreasing economic and ethnic diversity at the school. To be blunt, the school has been trending more white and more affluent for years. Many of us applied to Watts because we believe in the power and promise of public education. We want our children to attend a school that is rich in both economic and racial diversity, and we want a community-supported and engaged school for our kids. I'm concerned that this plan will only exacerbate the problem of decreasing diversity at Watts. It is creating one more obstacle for entry that I believe will result in the school becoming less diverse. In 2012, when our son started there, the free and reduced lunch population was over 50%. Last year, it was 44%, and I'm sure it will drop again this year. In 2012, the population breakdown was about 40% Hispanic, 30% Black, and 30% White. This year, it is 30% Hispanic, 17% Black, and 48% White, and that is not what we want to see happening at our school. And the incoming pre-K class this year saw even greater declines. It is 24% Hispanic, 12% Black, and 60% White. As you move forward with the sliding fee structure for pre-K, please keep in mind ways to increase both the socioeconomic and racial diversity at the school. I realize that since the Supreme Court ruling, you cannot look at race, but you can look at socioeconomics and that that makes a difference. In 2015, over 700 kids were on the waitlist in Durham who qualified for free federal and state-funded pre-K. Please consider reserving 30% to 40% of the pre-K slots at Watts for these families, giving priority first to families who qualify for free pre-K and live in our priority zone, and then offering spots to other families who qualify and want to attend Watts, and fill the remaining spots through the current lottery system. I've outlined my ideas to share with you, which I'll give you. We do have a diverse priority zone, but there has not been enough outreach and advertising to let families know ahead of the application period. Thank you for your consideration and service.
Thank you. Yes, if you have written comments when you come to speak, we'd appreciate handing it to Chip here. He will collect it and we'll be able to review it. All right, our next speaker is Tom Admay.
Yes, good evening. My name's Tom Admay. I'm the parent of an African-American pre-K student at George Watts. There's a couple of things I'd like to talk about, some of which will echo comments that have previously been made. Going back to what Giovania was saying about the Committee on Racial Equality, I particularly would like to draw your attention to their suggestion of developing a set of standards for culturally relevant teaching to assist teachers in effectively instructing children of color. There's been a number of comments made this evening about various statistics, and I've tried to look at the statistics, but have found that, that there's just a lot of information that doesn't seem to be available to parents. When you, you know, if you want to try to look into things like, what is the end-of-grade performance based on, you know, gender, socioeconomic, racial, just, somebody must have that information, but it's not readily available to parents. Even when I've requested it from the school, they've only been able to point me back to the websites that have much broader information. So I'm requesting that somehow that information be made readily available to the public. Then on the universal pre-K, which I, I support universal pre-K, I think that's a wonderful thing. I think it should be taxpayer-funded, just like kindergarten, first grade, whatever. We aren't asking parents to reach in their pocket for that. But I am deeply concerned about this proposal for Watts and Morehead to go to a sliding scale fee system for this next year. And the reason I'm concerned about that is that I, I think that, that parents of means will understand that, that this is a gatekeeping function, and, and that they'll reach into their pocket and pull out the money and send their kids to it. But someone of more modest means, even if their fee was, was much smaller, that, that might be enough to keep them from sending their child, and that then what's going to happen is, you know, because of the way Watts in particular is set up, if you don't get in at pre-K, you don't get in. And if you don't, you know, and the same thing happens with, with siblings. So what, what I'm afraid is going to happen is that you're going to run this program for a couple of years, find that it completely skews the demographics, but then you're going to be stuck with it. Even if you cancel it at that point, you're going to be stuck with the impact of it while those people go through and their siblings go through. So I'd like you guys, and, you know, it, it concerns me that you, you know, as a parent of a pre-K student, you know, there's been no polling, no one's asked, like, would you have sent your kid if you had to pay, you know, a, a quick questionnaire, six questions, you know, income, race, a few other things, and you could find out a lot about what would actually happen if you did this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker would be Lindsay Bach.
Hi, on the other hand, I'm not so tall. Good evening. My name is Lindsay Bickersbach. I'm the mother to two young girls, one of whom is currently a kindergartner at George Watts. I'm also a member of the George Watts School Improvement Team. As someone who cares deeply about contributing to the public schools in Durham, and also who is deeply committed to the importance of education and exposing our children to the diversity of life experiences and worldviews that are a part of our community, I thank you for the opportunity to provide public comment. First, I want to stand with the parents of African-American children at George Watts to say that when Black and Hispanic children have a different experience in our public schools, it affects all of us. I applaud PAC for its hard work to stand against the gap and encourage the Board of Education to work hard to apply both resources and new and proven strategies to address the achievement gap that is present at George Watts and many other Durham schools. Additionally, I want to push the Board of Education and Durham Public Schools to commit to considering and evaluating the impact of the newly approved sliding scale fee for pre-K education at George Watts and Morehead Montessori Magnet Schools. I understand some of the reasoning behind such a fee, but I think that there is much that is unknown about the logistics of this approach to supporting the availability of pre-K education within DPS. It will be important to examine the administrative burden that will accompany this approach, including validating incomes and ensuring payments, and to look at the impact that this additional layer of the application will have on the diversity of the student body at these magnet schools. As Durham changes and parents' interest in DPS schools evolves, it will be essential for Durham Public Schools to have the data to unwind the interest in locally-based pre-K, a desire for strong, diverse magnet schools, interest in the Montessori Magnet programs, the ability of DPS to address the achievement gap in a way that promotes equity for all students across and within Durham Public Schools. All of this information will be key to developing efforts to scale the availability of pre-K education in Durham. Finally, I want to emphasize the strong interest from parents at George Watts to contribute to continued discussion of both of these issues. I hope you will solicit and consider input from these families as you seek to address and eliminate the achievement gap, and that use the Montessori Magnet Program as one successful strategy to increase the availability of diverse, peaceful, early education programs in Durham. Thanks very much for your time this evening.
All right. Thank you. Now, the next speaker is, it says Jody White, but it has a slash through it. Oh, sure, sure.
Thank you. Thank you for taking public input. My name is Jody White. I have a child at Watts, and I am here to share my concern with you about the process for which this sliding scale program was proposed. I'm definitely a supporter of universal pre-K as a concept here in Durham. I'm not opposed to sliding scale, but what I am, what I do have concern about is the process by which the board decided on this. As a public school stakeholder, I want to understand how this sliding scale idea was settled on as a solution for equitability by the board. And at this point, I have more questions than answers. What research and precedence was reviewed by the board? Was input from the Morehead-Watts pre-K committees considered, solicited, or welcomed during this decision process? Does the public have access to the materials that were considered and reviewed by the board during the consideration time? If this fee system is building a savings chest for future implementation of universal pre-K, are the funds that are collected from this program marked as restricted, or will they go into the general fund? Is there a document that explains how these funds will be collected and appropriated for our universal pre-K? What is the administrative cost of administering this system, and what are the impacts that we haven't considered yet or heard that y'all are concerned about? How is this pilot program regarded by the Universal Pre-K Task Force? Was their input solicited or welcomed? Will the comments heard tonight have any effect on the implementation of this system? And what is the purpose of this session if y'all have already made a decision? Because I feel like these answers need to be shared with the public to add some transparency to the decision process, I respectfully and humbly request that you pause the implementation of this program until public input can be solicited, digested, and considered with stakeholders of the school system.
Okay. Next speaker is, I think it's Joanna R. Joanna Rosales. Juan, okay, yeah. Well, six minutes for, because of translation.
Hola, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Juana Rosales, y bueno, yo vengo a hablar aquí acerca del tema de los prekays. Tengo un niño en George Watts, y tengo dos futuros niños que van a entrar a pre-K.
Okay. She's, her name is Joanna Rosales, and she has two children in George Watts. One is in pre-K. Oh, I'm sorry. One is in pre-K, y la otra es en kindergarten. Los dos, los dos van a entrar a pre-K? The two of them are going to enter pre-K.
Y bueno, me interesa mucho el tema acerca de lo que están hablando, que es los ingresos de la familia. Como les repito, tengo dos niños, so, en general, son cinco niños, porque los otros están ya en otras escuelas.
Okay, so she's also concerned about this, this theme, that she's got two children that are going to be entering school. She's concerned about the costs that's going to be coming up because there's five in the family, and she, that's going to be a very big concern for her.
Bueno, y realmente hasta lo que me han informado es que va a ser un costo por cada niño, y pues sí me interesa saber qué es lo que puedo yo hacer para poder ayudar a los otros padres que se enteren de lo que está pasando.
So she wants to know, what is she supposed to do in terms of being able to pay for this or afford this or affect this, especially how it's going to be affecting other parents that are in the same situation?
Como les digo, so, no hay mucha variedad de, está disminuyendo la comunidad hispana en George Watts. Creo que este sería otro de los puntos que puede disminuir más el aplicar para los prekays.
So she wants to know also what she can do to inform the others at, at George Watts, and how she can also inform others that are concerned about going to pre-K.
Gracias.
Our next speaker is Rhonda Bullock.
Good evening, as you said. My name is Rhonda Bullock, and I'm a parent of a kindergartner at Southwest and former Durham Public Schools teacher. And so, somewhat in line with what other people have been bringing up tonight, I just have some questions that I want to pose to the board that I think, as parents, as community members, like, we deserve answers to. And so the first one is, where is the strategic plan for the district? What is it? What are the goals? What are we working towards? What are the SMART goals? What is supposed to be achieved by when? I think we all come in with our different points of reference and our different needs that we want to hold you all accountable for, but at bare minimum, we could hold you accountable for whatever it is that you have put in place to do, and that's very hard, unless I've missed it and overlooked it. If we don't have a plan for a district, like, every district, every organization, every high-functioning organization has a plan, and we, as parents and community members, and you as board members, we need that to help hold you accountable at bare minimum to what you all say that you will do, in addition to the concerns that we all individually bring up. And so we need some SMART goals. We're already in October, we're about to start in November. I don't know, I don't know the direction that you all are trying to take us, and it's going to be hard. It's hard to build trust in the community when we don't have a, a universal or a central direction to follow and a plan with graphics that we can follow. And I think that has to be created immediately and with thought, not rushed through, but with thought, so that we can have some type of idea of what direction we're going in. How are you making racial equity a priority? I think a lot of other people who are speaking tonight have been hitting around that. How is it a priority? And it's not a priority if it's not a line item in the budget. If there is not money supporting whatever those racial equity issues are, then it's null and void if you're not going to put money behind it. I think we, that's like a common thing. People know that if money is not behind it, then it has no standing ground. Can we move away, or, in addition to thinking about achievement gap, think about equity gaps that exist in the district? For one, the achievement gap is inherently racist, and it does uphold white supremacy because it's based on a deficit lens that Black kids aren't achieving, kids of color, Latino kids, brown kids aren't achieving, as well as white kids. What I would prefer that we looked at is where in the district are Black and Brown kids being successful? What's happening at those schools? Who's disaggregating that data? Is it class? Is it the location? Is it the school? Is it the combination of the culture at that school? Some kids are being successful, and we need to hammer in on that. What are those teachers and those schools and those parents doing? That data needs to be disaggregated, and that's where we need to focus, because some people are getting it right. Who are those people? Where are those schools? Who are those teachers? And let's emulate what they're doing throughout the district. Just real quickly, one issue that I saw at Southwest at the PTA meeting was that one Latino parent talked about there was no mechanism for Latino parents to participate in the PTA meetings. So tonight, we have these audio systems that people are receiving translation for, but at the PTA meeting, those aren't there. And allegedly, schools have to rent those systems from the district. That's a structural barrier to Latino families' participation in PTA meetings, and we all know that parent involvement is key. And so that's a structural racial issue that's preventing some families from participating. I think that's something the district needs to take into consideration as well.
Our next speaker is Juan. Our next speaker is Juana Garcia. Okay. She had to leave. And our last speaker for general public comment is Walt Barron.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you for your service, all of you. My name is Walt Barron. I am a parent of two girls at George Watts. So I'm going to kind of bring it back to where we started, the general public comments, talking about the achievement gap. Neither of my girls are black or brown, but I think, as Jevanya and Robin and others have so eloquently said, this is an issue that affects all of us. And it's not lost on me that the mission statement here is to provide all students with an outstanding education that motivates them to reach their full potential. I've been in Durham since 2005, and I believe that the kids who grow up in Durham have greater potential than other kids. And it's because of our diversity. But what's required to make that happen is that they all grow up together, and they learn together, they grow together, they interact together, and the achievement gap threatens that. What I love, love, love about Durham, and what I love about George Watts is our diversity, and we've got to protect that. And so, I'm just standing here as a white parent of white students to tell Jevanya and others that we support you and thank you for your leadership on this issue.
Thank you. That was general public comment. Now, it's time for approval of the Board of Education minutes.
So moved.
Second?
Okay, so, there's been a motion, and it's been motion, moved and properly seconded, that we approve the minutes for September 22nd, 2016, September 27th, 2016, special call meeting, special call meeting for October 3rd, 2016, special call meeting for October 5th, 2016, and then a special call meeting for October 13th, 2016. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please use the same sign. It passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is consent agenda. In the consent agenda, we have policy 9,000 series facilities, and then North Carolina School Boards Association policy revisions and updates.
Move approval of the items on the consent agenda?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please use the same sign. The consent agenda passes unanimously. To the reports of the work sessions, Academic and Student Services Work Session.
Our first report is our academically gifted report, and Beth Cross and Laura Parrott will walk us through this update.
Good evening. It is a pleasure to come before you to, tonight, to share the AIG plan for 2016-19. I am Beth Cross, Director of Advanced Academics. My trusty partner, Laura Parrott, Coordinator of Advanced Academics, joined us a year and a half ago, and it's made all the difference. Our goals in the AIG plan, we are the advanced academics team. The goals overarching, at the heart of all of our goals are communication, diversity, and rigor and relevance. But around that, and everything that we do, we're hitting K-12. This is a K-12 program. And in our three through eight, we're, we're doing really well. Nine through 12 programming, we know that our students are doing well, they're, they're accessing higher-level classes. As a first-generation college student myself, with Laura Parrott's background in AVID, as an AVID director in another district, we know how important it is to make sure that our kids are in the right classes, receiving the right supports, to then access post-secondary or college or career. What is also something that we have been working on for several years is our K-2 programming. K-2 programming is vital to the success of our AIG programming, because that is where we can get in our, all of our classrooms. We serve all of our students in K-1 and 2 with thinking skills, with science connections, with curriculum connections, so that we are seeing students as at potential and not at risk. In January 2008, there was a performance audit conducted through the Office of the State Auditor. And I bring this up because this gives us the background of our program standards. I've been in this position since 2006. I have lived through now three AIG plans, and this is the fourth. Our 2010 AIG plan was a result of a recommendation from the audit. There were some concerns that were lifted to the, to the state office, that AIG students were being underserved because AIG budget funds were being used for other purposes. The findings, they did not find that Durham was guilty of any of this, thank goodness, but one of the things that we benefit is a wonderful structure for our AIG program, aligning all AIG programs across the state. Our AIG program standards, there are six. They are comprehensive in our 44-page plan. You read many practices that are included in each of those standards. It's not just about identification. That's only one of our six standards. And I'd also like to mention that every LEA in the state is required to have an AIG plan aligned to these standards. Our charters are not required to have these plans. Our charters are not required to serve AIG students. Our AIG child count, as you can see, for standard one, we have been able to maintain a diverse group of students in our AIG program district-wide. On behalf of 5,761 students in our last official headcount, we bring forward this plan for approval and set in policy for the remainder of this school year, as well as the 2017-18 school year and the 2018-19 school years. And it's important to note that our numbers have decreased over a few years. This, these numbers span five years, which means that this covers two different plans. The last plan, we changed our identification qualifying criteria to 90%. We've seen a little bit of a decrease, but we've also have put more emphasis on K-2 programming services instead of just identification, because we were seeing that that was a need. It is important to also recognize that the, the advanced academics mission is to serve identified students as well as cultivate potential in all DPS students. In a recent count of students who are included in groups pulled for enrichment instruction, there are 400-plus and counting students who are in addition, and I've only gotten numbers from some of our elementary schools, who were pulled for enrichment, and they are additional students with whom the AIG specialist or the AIG licensed teachers are working who are not identified yet, if I may use a growth mindset. There are two recent stories I'd like to share. On Monday, I was, just this week, on Monday, I was in a classroom, and the teacher decided to do something different to review ancient Greece. What did she do? Did they have worksheets? Were they working out of a book? No. She designed an escape room. She did not withhold this just for her classes, who were higher performing. She did this with all of her classes. And I was lucky enough to be in one of those classes, and of course, I became a student. It's what I do when I go into the classroom. But we had to solve, we had to solve 11 riddles about ancient Greece, clues about ancient Greece. Students were finding clues behind clocks in padlocked boxes, and we were, we together were working on this. The teacher had three hints that she could give. We had to do this in 50 minutes. If she gave us a hint, though, we lost two minutes. Hint number one, students, are you ready for hint number one? No. They said no. I was, all right, we got this. Hint number two, we were really struggling. I asked the girl next to me, don't we want hint number two? Teacher said, hint number two, do you want it? No, we don't want it. We were struggling. But we actually got through it, and the kids had a blast. They learned, they reviewed, they worked together as a team, and leaders arose from that group that she had not seen before. Just doing an activity is a little bit different. She saw all of her stu, many of her students in a different light. And I told the kids, this shows me, you want challenge. Our students, all of our students, want the challenge. They want that struggle. Tomorrow, Laura and I get to go to a, a school to hear a NASA engineer, an African-American female NASA engineer, who will be speaking to a group at an elementary school. And then after that, after speaking to the large group, she's going to do a small, small science experiment with another group. That's what we're about. We're about enriching all students, as well as making sure our identified students have their needs met. By approving this plan, you are approving of our additions and changes from our 2013-16 plan, which are establishing a district review team, because as we realize, our numbers are decreasing. We want to make sure that we have a review team that adds some flexibility, yet consistency at the district level, for students who just don't make the cut. Why are they not making the cut? So that we can have that flexibility of identifying. Articulating a portfolio of evidence, we have students who are not test takers. We have a pathway that allows for that. And making sure that, that we've walked through with our AIG specialists, exactly what does that look like, and how do you advocate for a student who's really rock, rocking it out, if I may be unprofessional for a second, but not on the, on the test. Change, we changed the composite score for our intellectually gifted students to 96 percentile to be in alignment with our STAY 9-9, if I could speak statistically, as well as adopting, we're asking to adopt advanced academics lead teachers at the high school to help us with our programming and working on our honors courses. A focus for 2016-19 will always be strengthening K-2 programming, because that is where it is, that's where the work is, that's, research has shown, can help us with our diversity. Expand our advisory council to ensure that we have committee members as well as staff members. We've been largely focused on parents in most recent years. We have a lot of data, we're digging in the data. There's not a department that we don't work with to make sure that we are looking at all aspects of our students. Thankfully, we're aligned with the teaching, learning, and leadership team so that we can get in there and work with, with the curriculum and make a difference. And of course, in budget times, as we, we always have, continue to look for those partnerships and sponsors, sponsorships to help us do the things that we're able to do as far as enriching without it costing an arm and a leg, if I may say so. Now, I thank you for your time, and I would like to call up Laura Parrott to help field any questions you may have at this time.
I think you touched on it really quickly about the change in the composite score for intellectually gifted to 96 percentile. How will that affect the numbers in, in our program?
Though our current is 97%, as the composite score, but when we look at the STAY 9 curve, STAY 9-9 begins with 96%, so lowering it just one percentile will only increase some, but keep the integrity of what it has been established.
Thanks for talking about the K-12 initiative, especially because you're touching all of the kids. And many of us think of, many, many community members as well, think of AIG as just a small percentage of students in the whole thing. So thank you for serving all the kids in that area. And thank you for putting in things to strengthen the high school. My question is, you know, we in this district do have issues in middle schools, and what's the middle school picture look like?
What does the middle school picture look like?
For AIG?
That's pretty broad. Well, we, we still have our services, we have our AIG specialists, we have many AIG licensed teachers. That's a focus. The teacher I spoke about on Monday was an AIG licensed teacher in a social studies classroom, so many of the students were benefiting. We still have that program. I'd like to pull the AIG specialists out of the regular classroom a little bit more, but we're working to that. We have, we're, we're working very hard in our middle schools to move the needle, because that's where the focus needs to be. Now, we also have, thank you, Laura, we have a couple of pilot programs. In sixth grade, we have a compacted math program, because we, we, historically have been accelerating our students maybe a little bit too fast, especially in the math track. And we have identified some, some ways that we can actually, for our rising sixth graders, provide them with the math topics, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, so that we're not simply going from sixth grade then to Math 1, as we have done in the past, where they're skipping, you know, a year and a half of curriculum standards. Also, we have, we're in the second year of our pilot program for English 1 at the eighth grade level.
Go ahead.
So I, I just wanted to thank, thank you guys for providing the plan and the packet so that we could get it. And in, in a very non-patronizing way, I'm very glad that we have a lot of the community here, and I, I hope they won't feel patronized if we talk a little bit about our process for how we get to our agendas for these meetings, and that is, everything that comes to these meetings comes through work sessions that happen earlier in the month. And so, we've been presented with this already, and we brought it back because we needed some additional information around what the actual plan was, and so, I thank you for that. But also, those are great meetings to participate in, so that you can help inform what gets to the, the larger board meeting.
I just wanted to thank you guys for the, the plan itself, and I just wanted to point out something that I really liked about the program. My son's in AIG, and he has, they have to test for math. It's like a, a test of the subject, whatever the, the subject is. And if they pass that test, if they're AIG or not, if they test out of that, they actually get to go with the AIG facilitator. And that's, and that's kids that are not identified as AIG also. And I really appreciate that, because not, you know, we have, throughout our schools, we have very smart children, and some of them are not identified as AIG. And some of them are being pulled out because they know that subject, they already know it, and they're actually getting enhanced academic experiences, you know, with that sort of work. So I really like that part of the program itself. I think it is, is more inclusive, you know, of the program, and more, more students can take advantage of the great AIG program we have here in Durham. I mean, I think is, I think is one of the best in the state, and I really appreciate reaching out to other students, not, not directly identified as AIG, and providing those services to those students, too.
But first of all, thank you. And this, the, the work of the advanced academics, all the way from K through 12th grade, is, is just great. And what we do in Durham is, is impressive. The, in particular, the diversity of students that we reach is, I think, is exemplary. Certainly, when you look at the state as a whole, and you look at what Durham's able to do, we have more to do, but I hope that the word goes back to, especially to our teachers and school-level people, how appreciative we are of the efforts they're making. It would help me, it would help us, I think. I'm trying to figure out a way to do this without overburdening our already-stretched staff, but if there's, if there's some way to, to roughly quantify the numbers of students that we're able to reach in some of these other ways, because I think you're kind of restricted by law in what you can report to us, if I understand correctly, but you're finding creative ways to serve a more diverse group of students. And if there's, if there's any way to get some ballpark numbers on students that we're able to reach outside of the, the state requirements, because I think the case that we want to make is that, is that Durham Public Schools reaches a broad range of students with advanced programs. This is not a, a, a pull-out for a small group, but is enriching the, the education for many, many of our children. And the extent to which we can document that helps us make that case. So, thank you.
So just, just a question. I think I know the answer, but my daughter attends a school where there, there aren't a lot of AIG students identified. And so, is the, is the primary owner of the AIG work at an individual school, I assume working with the principal is, is, is step one, or does the principal have a designee at every single school as a AIG facilitator?
Every single school K-8 has an AIG specialist, and they are required to have an AIG leadership committee, which includes several grade-level teachers, counselor, and administrator.
All right. So working at that, with those folks at the local level is where to start. Great, thank you.
Yes. May I say one thing? I sat next to a parent at C.C. Spalding yesterday, and she looked at my name tag, she said, so what do you do? And I told her, and she said, I'm good, I'm glad to know that. And I told her, and she said, "I'm good, I'm glad to know that." I really want my child, I'd like to have him looked at for AIG testing. So, I was waiting for the principal. I emailed the AIG specialist, I told, gave her his name, I said, "Please look into, into him for me." And what made me think about charters, was she said, "We left a charter school because they didn't have an AIG program. He's a third grader." So, that's how, it's, it's as easy as that. You know, let that person know at your school, there's someone at every school.
Right. And the other thing I'll say, we were at C.C. Spalding, and as we were looking over the schedule with our AIG specialist there, you had little asterisks by names, and what we were seeing was these were the students who were identified, but there were that many more students who were being pulled in for services that weren't, actually, there was more children being pulled in for services than are identified. So she's able to reach many students.
So, I appreciate it's as easy as that, and I know you guys work on, on nurturing and identifying students of color in particular, and we've been working on it in Durham for years. We clearly have, still have work to do, but it's not as easy as just running into Beth Cross. It's, parents can self-identify, and we need our parents to know that, that if they feel their child, they can recommend, they don't, you don't need a teacher's recommendation. And there are multiple avenues in testing, you guys talked about that in work session, we're not going to use one test to exclude a child. And that's exactly the portfolio work you guys were talking about as well, is demonstration of, of giftedness in Durham. And the other fact that, that comes up in work session that I'd love our parents to hear is that in Durham, we identify about 17, 18% of our kids as gifted. The state funds us for 4%. There's a cap, a state cap for 4%. So, this is an important way, we're using local funds to supplement and enrich the work that we do in Durham Public Schools, and I appreciate all the work y'all do.
And again, it's not required for charter schools. And many of them don't have it. So, for those of you who want extra attention for your children, Durham Public Schools has an AIG team in all K through 8. Right? Right? All right. Remember that.
Can I add one thing?
Yes.
So, Tuesday, I had to think, oh my gosh, what's today? Tuesday night, we had an informational session at Staff Development Center for Duke TIP, and we had no idea how many people to anticipate. We were hoping for 50. We had almost 200 parents come out, and the, we had the executive director for Duke TIP there, and we also had the talent search manager. And her email the next day to me was, you know, "Thank you so much for this opportunity, but what really has struck, has struck me is the diversity that filled the Staff Development Center." She said, "It absolutely was refreshing to see," and she travels to 16 different states. So to have that really meant a lot.
At least some with Duke TIP is, number one, and number two, is that the new director of Duke TIP formerly worked for Durham Public Schools.
He did, Hillside High School.
And most recently was had MIT recruiting minority students for their engineering program. And lastly, I think, which is the absolute best vote of all, her child goes to a Durham Public School.
Amen.
Duke TIP, TIP stands for Talent Identification Program. And they are looking for high-ability learners who are scoring at 95, the 95th percentile and above in their testing. So it's refreshing to see that it was a diverse room of 4th through 6th graders.
I'm going to co-sign on it, I was at that program.
That's right.
With my son, and I went straight home and told my wife about the diversity that was in that room. It was unbelievable. It was just everyone. It was very reflective of what Durham Public Schools is.
Mr. Lee, it's believable in Durham.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
You take pictures.
We did, they're on our Facebook page.
I have a question for you all, and I might have missed this earlier in a meeting, but in the student identification section, y'all listed the data across schools, but do you also break it down for, like, elementary schools, looking at the racial demographics of who's been identified? Yes. And then, looking at that, do you go back and like do more intensive work in schools where you see less numbers?
We actually do it twice a year.
Okay.
Because we also have an official head count twice a year. And what we do, you see the district, but we then see the AIG group at a school versus the entire enrollment for the school. And that's actually an activity we're going to do next week, so that they can look at those numbers and then make goals.
Well, let's just, since Rhonda did talk about some goals that Durham Public Schools has strategically, we'll just say that celebrating AIG program and the, the diversity of the AIG program is something that this board has talked a lot about, because we are a leader in the state. And we certainly want to let our parents know what we do and how we're continuing to try to grow AIG. We are looked at nationally for being a leader in celebrating the giftedness and the brilliance of all of our children. And so, as that is, not as specific as you'd like for us to be, Dr. Bullock, we are, we are, we are, we are getting there. And thank you so much for calling us on that. But thank you, Beth, and Laura.
Please, please give me this opportunity to share some information. Number one, there is a district improvement plan that was presented to the Board of Education, and it is being revised and updated. At the December work session of the Instructional Services, we're going to, we're going to present, not, not the December work session, actually, at the November Board Retreat, we'll be presenting a subset of that plan, which is a plan for increasing the academic achievement for boys of color.
Thank you, thank you all very much. Do we, oh yeah, we need to approve this. That's right.
Unless she wants to come in.
All right, I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to approve the...
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we approved the academically and intellectually gifted AIG plan for 2016 through 2019. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please use the same sign. It passes unanimously. Daisy, Dr. Wilson Norman?
Next up, we have our athletic eligibility. This is where we're discussing sixth graders beginning in sports, and Larry McDonald will walk us through the update. There were some pieces we needed to add to the presentation.
And Mr. McDonald, just before you start, I apologize, we have public comment. On those, on these, we have two. And we have Roger Reed. Yeah?
Thank you very much for the opportunity. I am a coach, I've coached a lot of different sports through rec leagues, church leagues, and schools. And I'm also a parent, I've got an eighth grader and a fifth grader here at DPS, and my wife is a teacher. So I kind of see a lot of different angles. And I wanted to speak in favor of sixth grade eligibility for everything except football, because I understand the concerns there, obviously, with the physicality. Respectfully, understand the concerns with people coming in, from making that leap from elementary to sixth grade into middle school, being able to handle everything that comes with it on top of sports. But I want to say, at our school in particular, we have, sorry, I don't work at the school, I just coach there, we have mandatory study halls, where these children get the structure, they get the extra help. Frequently, the teachers are remaining after school to help groups from these study halls, whether it be, whatever sport it is, they all can come in for the extra assistance, as well as, as well as peer help within their study halls. Also, the structure of sports can help the kids, that's well-documented, can help kids achieve, but also individually help them kind of, my son especially, he's ADHD, and the exercise and the structure helps him focus on his academics better, because he knows, "I've got X amount of time, I can't procrastinate, I've got to take care of these issues." So it helps him develop. And through sixth grade, he got a little lost, and we got him back on track due to the great teachers we have at the school. But I think, had he had the sports, it could have helped him adjust a little quicker. So I do ask that you please approve them, not for any other reason other than give the parents the opportunity to decide. And they know their kids pretty well, I think they'd be able to tell that they have that. But we give a lot of those kids the opportunity, a lot of these sixth graders are going home and don't have anything to do. Yeah, they can be managers, but if they were involved, it would give them another way to fit into the school quicker, to acclimate a little better, and help them adjust academically as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our second speaker is Juana Rosales. I don't, is, is she coming back in?
She's in the front.
Okay. She's no longer here.
She's here.
Oh.
She's on the front.
Yeah. Yeah. And we'll do six minutes again for translation. Okay. She can email us. Mr. McDonald?
Good evening. Again, I guess. Tonight, we're here to talk about athletics and removing the barrier of sixth graders participating in athletics. So, the Board of Education, the State Board of Education, on August the 4th of this year changed their policy. Their policy originally stated that athletes, students in grades 7 through 12 could participate in athletics, and now they revised it to say grades 6 through 12. Currently, the Durham Public Schools Board Policy in Section 3505 states that grades 7 through 12 may participate. And so what we are asking tonight is that the Board would change and coincide with the state's policy, which says grades 6 through 12. Administration is asking that we would adopt policy HRSD 001, and athletic participation in the state of North Carolina beginning in January 18th of 2017, which would coincide with the change of our semester, so that we do not change in the mid-semester academics or middle school athletics. In order to be eligible, it states that eligibility is one less than the core course, the total number of core courses that they currently take. And that in grades 6, 7, and 8, not only do they are required to pass one less core course than the number required, a player must be in attendance in school at least 85% of the previous semester, and that child must be promoted to the next grade at the beginning of the school year. And all eligibility begins on the first day of the semester or the school year. So once the school starts, you can't go in and manipulate anything, it's stated that way. The second thing that was requested was the number of sports that we currently have in middle schools. So if you look at the chart, and I know for some of you that's a little small, but trying to make sure that we have all of the sports that we currently have participation in in Durham, along with the total sports by school, they're listed there, and you can see that for the most part, most of our schools provide sports based on what the interest level are for the students in attendance at their school are. Every now and then, we'll get some new interest, but for the most part, this is what the majority of the students participate in. So we're asking tonight that you would pass for sixth graders to play beginning with the beginning of the second semester. Are there any questions?
The School for Creative Studies, do they, they're not on this list because?
Because they don't offer sports at Creative Studies for middle school, because currently...
They have a, they have a...
They have clubs, and they have cycling, and they have jogging or running. And based on the number of students to field a team with the total number of students that they currently have, they wouldn't have enough students. And that's why if you look, some of the schools like Little River participate at Lucas DSA participate for football only, at Shepherd, and Lakewood-Monosor participate in football at Rogers-Her. And the policy specifically says that football is not included. No sixth grader will be allowed by state law to participate in football. The first time they can participate in football will be at the beginning of 7th grade.
Board members, I'd like to offer a motion that we accept the revisions to Local Board Policy 3505 to reflect the changes that the North Carolina State Board of Education Policy HRSD 001, policy title being 16 NCAC 6E 0202, policy regarding interscholastic athletics to allow sixth graders to play sports excluding football. You can, you can second it so that we can...
Second.
We can have discussion, thank you.
Happy to second.
I know what I, I know what I just...
Ooh, that was a long motion, so I'll just say what, it's been, many properly moved to all of that, and it's been properly seconded, discussion. Okay, no discussion?
I love discussing this, because, you know, I think I'm maybe an outlier in not being ready to, to move forward with this for our sixth graders. It's my understanding that the State Board actually made this decision rather hastily, made it for charter schools that were having trouble having enough students to field teams, and gave local districts the discretion. Didn't say that statewide students were all eligible to play, just pushed the discretion down to local Boards of Education. So I don't feel an urgency to do this, I'd rather have some time through the spring to wait and hear from, from parents in our community more. Our sixth graders that are in school this year, entered school knowing they weren't going to be able to play, just like previous generations, and I don't think there's a rush to, to do this and implement it quickly. So, that's where I come to it from this evening.
And I'm somewhat on the fence on this, as I spoke last time. Having been a performing arts instructor myself, the structure that sports offer can be great for, particularly some students who are also kind of unsure of where they, where they are in that school community. So I, I definitely support that part of it, and the academic part of it too. I just, and again, as Natalie's mentioned, just where it's coming from, I went back, I looked at the state policies and so forth, I just don't like the, the timing of it. It just seems so strange for it coming when it did, as opposed to during the summer, when we would have more time to look at the policies and so forth. So I'm just really not ready to move on it just yet. That's my personal opinion.
Yeah, so irrespective of how it was driven through the State Board, it came to mine Xavier's attention, as we attended a Durham Council PTA meeting, and, and a parent came up and said, "Where are we on this?" And so it, you know, people are paying attention, and granted, those are people that are very into sports and want to see their sixth graders participate. You know, what, what we've heard in two meetings now is that this is the district's recommendation. I, I don't have a strong feeling on it, I think there's, there's good points on both sides, but given that that is the administration's recommendation, I'd be prepared to support it.
Well, here's where I am. I don't want us to forget that it's not the kids that's making the decision to try out, it's the parents who have to allow the child to try out. And I would expect that the parents would know their children well enough to know if going into sixth grade, they will be able to work on playing a sport, and their, their academic transition. I know my children, and if they're at a point where they could try out for soccer, or try out for cheerleading, or whatever it is, basketball, or whatever it is, I would make that determination myself. Now, there's going to be a lot of kids that are too small, and the parents understand that they will not be able to work, that they will not be able to work with them playing a sport. But then there are going to be some parents who feel like their children... parents who feel like their children can go straight from elementary school to the NBA, and they're going to let them try out. Now, that's a whole different level because you have to try out. That doesn't mean you go try, you go try to get on a team and boom, you're on the team. You have to try out. And only those who excel above the others are going to make it on that team. So, this policy doesn't say everybody's going to be playing sports, because everybody's not going to be playing sports. And I have a feeling it's going to be a small, small percentage of students in the sixth grade actually playing, starting, you know, actually playing on a middle school team. So, I like giving the parents this option, just like football. I want, not, not in sixth grade, don't, I'm not saying this is for sixth grade, I'm just saying, some people don't want their children playing football, period. I'm one of those parents. My wife is one of those parents, so we, we agree on that. But there are some people who want their children playing football. You know what? Good for you. Go let them play football. My children are not. I let them play lacrosse or something like that, where they can wear pads and feel like they're in a uniform. But that's the parents' choice. It's not the, is, I don't think it's the role or the purpose of the school board to say, "We're not going to give you that football choice because we think we know for your child better, uh, what's better for your child." I love the option of giving the, the parents the choices, and this is, this represents that choice for the parents to make that decision. It's not the child saying, "Mom, I'm going to play foot, uh, play basketball." Well, you know what? No, you're not. Okay? That's up to the parents. So, that's why I support this. I support it because it puts the decision on to the parents.
My, my father told me I could play football. He wanted to see how big a fool I was, I think. Uh, I figured out I was too small to play football pretty quickly. Uh, I think we spend too much time worrying about football and basketball, which is really a small number of kids. I think, in my experience in, in, in high school, and I'm sure it's even more true in, in middle school, is the large numbers of athletes are in cross-country, or in track, or in some of these sports, which are, which can expand to accommodate however many students want to go out. And that those are great places for kids to engage with the school, as, as Xavier was saying. Uh, and I'm, I'm in agreement, I find myself in agreement with Matt. The, the coaches and athletic directors have come to us, that they're in favor of it. Uh, I don't see any strong reason not to go with it. Uh, I think the opportunity to, to engage with the school is, is a good thing, so I'm prepared to vote for it.
I, I would just add quickly, I missed one note, that I think our community should know that we, we very often make decisions in the best academic interests of students, and those sometimes fly in the face of athletic interests, including the school start time change, where we heard a lot from our high school, um, professionals about what that would do for athletics, and, uh, we made that decision, you know, in spite of those objections, so.
Okay, so...
So, I am not here trying to convince my colleagues of anything. I am going to be clear that, that I'm not supportive of this at this time. And what I would hope that we would do as a district as this moves forward, um, is, is come up with just a one-pager for parents to look at, either that, that's on the website and available to them. And it kind of indicates how they might assess whether their child might even be ready to try out, or whether they might need to focus more on, on academics. But also that, that we're not expanding teams to make them bigger to accommodate sixth graders. They're going to be as competitive as they always have been, and, and those kind of things. Um, just so we're giving good information to families and parents as families try to navigate this change for young children.
Yeah, I, I also want to say that my objection is on the timing of it and not any of the other points that have been made. I mean, I've auditioned many a kid whose dream was, their parents dreamed they played instrument, and it wasn't necessarily there. So, I know that it will be, um, there will be tryouts and so forth, but the timing of it bothers me.
Okay, with no more discussion, has already been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please use the same sign.
Aye.
Aye.
It passes five to two. All right. Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Then, yes. Um, the next section is the pre-K sliding scale, and we do have public comment. We have six signed up. Okay. I'm going to try this here, um, Latrico Romero, Romero? Latric, Jer, no. You got any idea? La, Ramirez? Let's see. 523 Green Street? Okay. If you signed up for, well, we're going to go through, and if you signed up for pri- uh, the pre-K sliding scale and didn't get to speak, raise your hand. I might not be saying it right. Um, Juana Rosales, she actually had to leave. Juana Garcia, she had to leave also. Uh, Anna Gassman Pines? Hey, we got one. All right. All right.
Good evening, and thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you and for your service. My name is Anna Gassman Pines, and I am both a Morehead parent of a second grader and a pre-K student, and a Duke professor with expertise in education and social policy. I am strongly committed to public education and to the expansion of pre-K in Durham County through the public school system. I commend the board for pursuing pre-K expansion. I am also strongly committed to educational equity, as I know you are, and I hope to work with you to craft policies that will support our shared equity goals. That said, I do have a number of concerns that I'd like to share about the proposed sliding scale fee policy, some of which have already been stated tonight. First, in any sliding scale fee structure, it is, in my opinion, going to work against our school's diversity goals. I have attended a number of recent meetings of Watts and Morehead parents and community members, and one of the most striking things about these meetings was the strength of our collective commitment to sending our children to diverse schools. When something is a bureaucratic hassle, when, uh, the people with fewer means or less of an ability to meet during business hours and so forth may be less likely to go through with that hassle. And this is especially true when the process involves income verification, which is likely to be more difficult for low-resourced families than for higher-resourced families. I am concerned that implementing the proposed sliding scale fee structure will make accessing pre-K at Watts and Morehead and other pre-K programs that may open in the future more difficult for low-income families in our community. Second, the plan as currently written strikes me as incomplete, and these missing pieces make it difficult for me to support the current proposal. Number one, it's not clear where the fees will go, and I'd like to see a commitment for the funds to be returned to the schools to support the pre-K programs. Number two, I am wondering about the penalties for non-payment, and whether there's any possibility that a child would not be able to continue attending school. It seems like a potentially dangerous precedent for the public schools to be in the position of excluding children from school due to the non-payment of fees. And number three, I think there needs to be a much more careful consideration of the projected costs to administer, administer the sliding scale fee structure. Administering this sca- this scale will not be free. In order to verify income and household size for all families, it will take substantial amount of staff time and resources, and one could easily imagine a scenario where costs actually exceed revenue collected, in which case the policy should be rejected. Or, another plausible scenario, in which costs are equal to the revenue collected, with the result being that some DPS families are simply paying to have their income verified, and that should be, not be asked of any family in DPS. To conclude, I'm just happy with the education that my children are receiving at Morehead, and I want to work to ensure that these schools do not become victims of their own success as seemingly small changes erode the very things that make these schools exceptional. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Um, our next speaker is Tom Winger.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm going to actually change my talk a little bit because so many things here that I want to say have already been said. However, I am up here because, along with Anna, I am, uh, the co-chair of a committee that formed to discuss this issue of sliding scale fees, the so-called Watts-Morehead pre-K Fee Committee, and I feel obliged to actually go over some of these issues, even though they've already been discussed. Uh, first, I want to express the appreciation of the board and the whole school system for the efforts, and the task force, I might add, uh, to address these issues for high-quality school, accessible to all, and inclusive to all. I want to acknowledge the importance of the issues at hand, and you've heard a lot of parents from our schools already talk about this, that, um, we want universal pre-K, uh, and in particular, uh, well, I should say, early childhood education, and in particular, uh, universal pre-K for four-year-olds. With specific regards to the Montessori schools, we understand and applaud the board's concern about fairness and equitability. So, I don't think we have a conversation here, a disagreement about goals. There are some specific concerns, you've heard most of them. Transparency was one that was brought up earlier. Uh, we're afraid that this has moved too fast and without adequate public debate. Uh, and, um, that may be water over the dam at this point, but I think it needs to be said. There's deep concern, as you've already heard, uh, and I'll put a, a, another twist on it, about how the sliding scale fees might affect diversity in the schools. I don't think we know how that'll turn out, but, um, it's very disturbing, and as one speaker already pointed out, at least in our schools, it's Montessori, once you're in, people tend to stay, and whatever mistakes, if there are mistakes, are made by this process, will live through the entire period of the, of, of the school. It'll go all the way through fifth grade. Um, it's complex because the immediate diversity concerns at Watts and Morehead are that they're becoming majority white and upper-middle-class schools. But that's not the problem in the public school system as a whole, which is underrepresented by upper-middle-class white students. That brings up the question of in what way this could possibly be a pilot for a broader pre-K task force approach to, um, to bringing universal pre-K at Durham. Uh, and it also brings up the issue that the solution for these schools might not be the best overall solution if it's just focused on these schools. So, we, we care about, w- we're all in this because we want diversity, so I just want to say that. Uh, but we want a solution that doesn't inadvertently harm the situation. Um, we're worried about the Latino community finding it too complex, worrying about showing their income. I won't go into that anymore. Unfortunately, some of the speakers who came are not here to talk, and, um...
Thank you.
I'll, I'll stop. Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And the last speaker for the pre-K sliding scale is Matt Medlin. Medlin. Yeah, Medlin, yeah.
Am I the last? Am I the last of the six on your list? Okay, no pressure. Um, so my name is Matt Medlin. I'm a parent of three little boys. Um, my eldest is a first grader at, uh, Morehead Montessori, which I think is a good paradigm for, uh, what I'm going to deliver to you tonight. So, when a decree is issued at my household to my children that they are unified against, I get a message from them in series, and the eldest comes and tells me that he disagrees, and he has a good point and a logical thought and justification for that. And then the middle one comes, and he tells me that he also disagrees, a little less eloquent and well-thought-out. And then the youngest one also in unison comes, and mainly he just grunts and says, "I, I disagree." Um, so think of me as the youngest in this case, because everyone that's already spoken about this sliding fee scale has been very eloquent and is accomplished in that regard. But my bit is that, uh, I, I agree with all the, uh, speakers. I'm supportive of the public schools. I, um, value diversity in education. That's why, um, one of the reasons that we live in Durham is because we want to be a part of that. And I'm not opposed to funding schools. I mean, show me the, I've just voted. Show me a bond, I'm for it. Um, I'm happy, as a taxpayer, to throw money at schools, but I don't feel like, in this case, the sliding fee scale is the way to do it, mainly because I, I don't understand it. I don't, I don't think it's very well thought out. I haven't seen exactly where the money is going. I have a lot of questions about the process of how it came together, as many other people do. So, that's not clear to me. Um, and that doesn't sit very, that doesn't sit very well with me. I want to understand exactly how you came to this. I mean, I'm, don't have the bona fides of everyone else, but it seems plain to me that imposing a fee, um, on a, on a, on pre-K isn't going to increase diversity, which I think is a goal that we all, uh, share for these programs. So, uh, explain that to me. So, that's one, disagree with it. Two, um, more about the process and transparency that's very unclear. So, I don't know when you're going to speak about that. Are you going to explain that in the, in the next few minutes after this? Um, that'd be helpful. And then, um, oh, someone, uh, made a request to, um, pause the implementation of the sliding fee scale. Like, are, are you, has it ruled? Is it in place? Can we pause that, Robert Schrill's order? Can we, um, make a motion to do that? So, one, I would ask that you please, uh, pause the sliding fee scale implementation. Um, so, discuss that. And then, um, there was a mention in the minutes, so I have three boys, as you know, and the eldest is the only one in school, and, uh, just a couple seconds.
You can finish, you can finish.
We love our school, and I want our family to be a part of that school for a long time, right? So, to me, sibling priority, which is something that's mentioned in the minutes, is very important to me because it's important my boys go to that school, and we grow up with that school and through it, uh, through the rest of our time in Durham. So, if you can make some time to discuss, um, any changes in sibling priority and assure me that you're not going to make any changes in that process, I'd appreciate that very much. Okay, thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Now... I'm going to allow Minnie to speak. She has to leave, so I want to get her voice on the record, because she, she has to run.
First, I want to say thank you. Thank you, Morehead and George Watts, George Watts parents for supporting Montessori, supporting our schools, and supporting the vision that Durham Public Schools had to bring Montessori programs to Durham as early as, as, how many years have we had it? I mean, and we, I mean, we were at the forefront of, of instituting Montessori programs in Durham Public Schools, so we thank you for supporting that. And we did it for pre-K. Please know that the state does not give us one dime for pre-K education. The state of North Carolina does not support. We only get money K through 12, and in order to be a Montessori teacher, it costs the, it costs local enormous amounts of money to be trained. So, I appreciate the fact that we have our beautiful children going there. I appreciate the fact that the PAC is coming to talk about Achievement Gap, and that others, Zlink was talked about the fact that we're looking at a lack of diversity and the fact that we are, our, our, our programs are moving where there are a majority of, of, of middle-class and white students. We talked, somebody gave us a history of what George Watts used to be. Well, there's an appreciation for Latino parents, an appreciation for African-American students, I mean, Latino students and African-American students coming back into Watts. That's all what we're trying to do. Please know that Durham Public Schools, we, this plan may not be well communicated, but it has been certainly well thought out by this board. This is not something we just came up with, because we want to make sure that all children, that we have a diverse population of students that can take advantage of the Montessori concept, the Maria Montessori established for poor children. So, we want, we want to make sure that that happens. How are we going to do it so that it is fair and just? You know that we have a lottery system that we go through in Durham that ensures that we have a certain diversity in terms of eth- we have a certain diversity in terms of ethnicity and in terms of socioeconomic status in our schools. Now, we know the lottery can't be based on race, we know that, but we know Bill McNeil, who was recognized nationally as Superintendent of the Year, came up with an economic plan for Wake County that received all kinds of accolades. So, we know how to do this. We know how to do this, and we know how to do it well. And I think Ms. Linquist gave us some model of how we should do it 30-30-30, or something 30-40-30, or some kind of model that, that you suggested that we might look at. We have that, and I'm sure our members will discuss that. But I want you to know that we, our desire is not to exclude, it is not to keep kids out, it is not to, to, but it is inclusive. And to know that our Latino families, whatever communication we have to do, in terms whether it's door-to-door, special sessions, anything like that, we will make sure that that language barrier is brought. We will, the sliding scale means that it's just that. If you don't have the money, those who don't have won't pay, but those who have will. I think that makes sense. It's sliding scale. And how does it apply to other programs? Well, in Durham Public Schools, if you look at statistically, we have over 52% of the children in Durham Public Schools are African-American. So, in some neighborhoods, and when we look at how our pre-K has been done, it has been done traditionally with students who meet a certain criteria, means that they need more help. So, it hasn't been as diverse in terms of perhaps academic, academic intellect or academic ability. So, we try to make sure that those who need the most to get prepared to go into kindergarten, we make sure that they're there. So, we're gonna be looking at all of those things. We know that the more diverse a classroom is, the more diverse a program is, the more opportunities we have for our children to learn from each other. That's, that's, that's our goal. It is not going to be punitive to anyone, but we do want to make sure that if you can afford to help us with pre-K, and where is the money going? It will certainly go back into, into George Watts and into Moorhead to help train those teachers that we need on staff to be trained to teach the children. That's where it's going. It's not going to any salaries or anything up here. And we already have all of the, all of the financial acumen that we need to make sure that we run the program. We don't need to hire anybody else to do this. We are set in Durham Public Schools with the brilliance in our financial team that will help us to do this. So, I just wanted to make sure that I put those things on the table before I leave, and make sure I thank our parents to let you know that these are very thoughtful people up here. And if we have not communicated that thought process to you, blame it on our, what is it? Our hearts and not our heads? Is that the way it goes? Our heads and not our hearts? But make sure it will, your questions will be answered this evening. And if you have any more, we'll be open to answer those, too. Good evening.
Okay, so we'll go with the presentation, and then we'll have discussion. Thank you, Minnie. Drive safe, well, be safe. I know, be safe. Be safe.
The pre-K sliding scale came about as part of our magnet review, and so we have a team that has worked on developing the pre-K sliding scale. So, if Mary Griffith and Suzanne Conderman and our Chief Financial Officer has helped us with the financial pieces, would kind of walk us through the process and then answer any questions.
Thank you, and good evening.
Could I just welcome Mary Griffith, who is the new Director of our Magnet School Program, and congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So, we just wanted to, again, share how staff came up with this process and provide some background information as to how we arrived to the pre-K sliding scale. Initially, the pre-K task force explored the expansion of pre-K offerings, which included universal pre-K. That task force committee also had some discussions highlighting the need for high-quality programming and noting that universal pre-K is not free. Currently, in DPS, our pre-K programs include Exceptional Children, Title I, and NC pre-K. New programming will target future pre-K students that demonstrate developing skills and provide additional options for diverse populations. And then finally, both Watts and Moorhead Montessori schools provide high-quality Montessori programs at no charge for our community. And last May, the Board of Education approved eight recommendations based on the comprehensive magnet review, one of which was to transition our pre-K Montessori programs to a sliding scale.
Could I just ask, or clarify on the third bullet?
Sure.
Current DPS programs include Exceptional Children, Title I, and NC pre-K, and completely locally-funded magnet resources for Watts and Moorhead.
Yes, they're not part of the K5 state allotment.
That are not part of any of those that are listed in that third bullet.
Correct.
Thank you.
As was presented in committee, committee in detail, how we went about deriving at this sliding scale, this was compared not only to things that were being looked at by other districts within the state, but also across the country. Poverty was used as a baseline, and this is built at 200% above the poverty level. We considered the phase-in amount by both number of program participants and the number of individuals in each and every household.
I'm going to talk a little bit about the impact on resources, and I know Ms. Port Brown did such a wonderful job, but some of the things that we need to look at is the verification of eligibility, so we will need to have a process for that. Also, our staff responsibilities, who will be collecting and doing the income verification, the fiscal accountability and sustainability piece, and I know Ms. Griffin just spoke to that as far as the magnet review, and also, the preschool committee has also looked at the sliding scale for universal pre-K. And then also the management of the project, who will own this project, how will it be implemented, and all of those pieces that we need to answer. I know this is probably very difficult to see, but this is the sliding scale, and as you can see, if you make under $30,000, you are not paying anything, and then it goes progressively up from there.
That's an annual fee, is that correct?
Yes. Those are annual, yes. Questions?
Is it, is it possible for the executive summary to be placed on screen? That has the timeline for the implementation? It's page 135 of our packet, if that's possible?
It's not uploaded.
It's not uploaded, okay.
On this particular computer to project?
Okay. She's, yeah.
Okay.
While she's doing that, the reason I'm asking for that is that the timeline has several points, eight different points of things that are to be assessed and approved over, between now, October 16th, and going through July 2018, that require a lot of input and communication. My question is, on some of the other slides you just showed about the ways that this was brought about, one thing that was not there was when that happened. You know, I'm news to the board, so I'm walking in with the assumption, these are some discussions that did take place before I got here, is that correct? And so, can you give me a sense of when this really started? This discussion?
Sure. In terms of the magnet review last May, the magnet review took place, which, as I mentioned, was a comprehensive review of magnets in terms of were they meeting the three objectives, where we were with each individual school, and then eight recommendations were presented to the board as a result of that review, one of which was the pre-K sliding scale, when we saw in light of budget cuts, costs going up, and our enrollment at our pre-Ks maintaining, and interest maintaining. And so, that generated that conversation for staff to then talk with the principals, and then follow up with our pre-K director and the pre-K task force. And you can speak to that timeline, Dr. Wilson Orme?
Sure. For the pre-K task force, it was also a conversation around funding universal pre-K, because again, it's not going to be free, can't, we can't support that locally. The other piece is, it's also been a conversation in our Whitted Building, and, you know, talking about what we may be doing there as well, and anything that we do in the future that involves children, you know, that need pre-K. So, it's been a conversation for a long time.
And the reason I bring it up, I'm getting a little bit of deja vu. Obviously, when I was considering running for this office, even before the campaigning or before I signed, I started attending more school board meetings. And as a DPS employee, I had an opportunity to put in my input on the start of school long before it was implemented. I mean, that was a long process. And having my input as a teacher, and then looking, coming to the meeting in which it was actually discussed and voted on, that was a long time in there. And I was surprised at how many people were there for public comments to talk about, "Where was this?" And so, my colleagues are probably tired of hearing me say, "We've got to communicate better." Because I do believe that, that the work has been publicly discussed for a while, but I get the feeling that that's not the sense in the building. And this is not the first time this has happened, and so, here again...
So, Mr. Kason, I'm sorry that Minnie had to leave, because I would also like to, if, if, if we own any issues with transparency, you know, I will take those on, but, but let's also remind ourselves that a year ago, this board passed a universal pre-K resolution establishing the task force with the county and the city. That was very publicly done, and that's been a very important conversation for this board. This, this topic of actually, how do we, how do we talk about equity and continue to have free pre-K spaces for children that are not on a high-needs list as far as need, has been a conversation of this board for years, and actually predates Dr. Lum. So, it's new, but it's not new. It's coming to a, to a decision point, because it's almost time for Magnet Fair. We need to let families next year know what to expect. I think, you know, the community has raised some important logistical things for us to continue to work through, but it's, it's not all the way new. And maybe you guys that have been here a little while remember at least more of the last two years of it, but it goes back, and it goes back. It's been something that we've been afraid to really dig in and say, "Community, can we come together and do this as a step to bring us forward to covering more four-year-olds in universal pre-K in Durham?" And that's why I think it's an exciting step, even though it feels like a big change.
I have several points I'd like to make, and some questions to ask. First of all, thank you for all the parents that are here. I know a lot of folks had to go home, since we moved school up early. So, I do think, as Mr. Kason just said, I do think we need to take some ownership of, for communication. I think that we have a tendency to think, because we talked about it, somehow that got to the community, and clearly, these are folks who are saying that that wasn't true. So, without looking to cast blame, although I'm happy to blame Minnie since she left, but, that's not, for those of you on TV, that's not true. But the minutes reflect. But I think we all need to own, own the process, and, and begin looking more carefully at, at our communication. My understanding is that the, what we thought was going to happen is that the board had this discussion in the spring, that the administration talked to the administrations at the school level, and that what we were expecting was at the school level, there was going to be this kind of conversation. Seems pretty clear that didn't happen if the PTA president is speaking to us and saying that she wasn't part of that. So, we need to look at where that broke down. I'm particularly, I guess, affected by the discussion around George Watts, although I think it is applicable to both the schools. Both my girls went to George Watts well before it was a magnet school. I think that often we, we overreact to very small intervals of time. So, when my children went to George Watts about 20 years ago, my daughter was the only white student in her kindergarten. There were, I believe, one, maybe two Latino students, and the rest of the, of the students were African-American. The school was 90-95% free and reduced lunch. That continued to be true, but it wasn't always true. That was, it was originally, by law, a white elementary school, and then after integration, it was, in fact, a pretty diverse school for a number of years. And then, as, over time, that changed. The, the magnet was, in fact, an effort to try to bring children in the neighborhood back to the school. I wish we had more programs that were successful beyond our wildest dreams. It worked. It did exactly what we, what we were trying to do. We don't have a long list of programs that that's true for, so now we're trying to respond to that situation. I think it's important to not overreact to, again, a, a specific timeframe that's, that's narrow, given the long timeframe, and in particular, given that how much of this is not really in our power. The demographics change in the community, the demographics have changed in the neighborhood. I personally don't see that there's a relationship between the effort to diversify the school and the existence of a sliding scale. I think we have sliding scales and, and fees for many programs in, in the school that are, that are very, very diverse. I think our, our parents and our school system know how to make the financial system work. I just don't, I don't believe that, that the sliding scale is going to be the issue that affects diversity. I think we need to address the diversity of the two schools. I think there are ways of doing that. I think that the board, the administration, and the school, and the parents need to come together and to begin addressing a number of those ways. I was grateful for Ms. Linquist's suggestion, specific to the, how we can do that at the pre-K level, but clearly, it's not just a matter of who we get information to or setting aside slots, but that, as the parents said earlier, every parent needs to know that their child's going to get a good education at the school. Right now, clearly, there are questions about that, and so, I think addressing those issues will take us farther in terms of addressing the diversity of the schools than the sliding scale. I think we need the sliding scale, because I think we need a model that's financially stable, that will allow us to expand the number of, of locations where we are able to run pre-K programs. I believe the question was raised a number of times. I think we should just say it directly, my understanding, and tell me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that all the money generated goes back to support these two specific programs, that they're not, not going anywhere else. It's to try to address some of the, the extra subsidy right now that goes to those two schools, so that they are financed in a more equitable way in comparison to other schools, that money is going to stay within the schools to help run those programs. I think that's, I think that's all my points. Thank you.
He is finished. Perfect. So, I would like to say that we, we don't try to do things in secret. We don't try to keep things hidden in work sessions, and I don't feel accused of that, but that's something very personal for me, is that we, we have made efforts to be overly transparent by including our new video streaming system with recordings afterward, and I'm proud of that. I mentioned that to some of the community members that I met with. And at the same time, I would, I would just like to second that, that there was a communication breakdown on this, and that I think our community has a right to hold us accountable, and we have a right to question where that breakdown happened. And if, if a certain email hadn't been sent, I'm, I'm sure the anger would have gone through even further levels, because we, this, this may not have had a public comment. We added this to the agenda to provide extra time for our We added this to the agenda to provide extra time for our community to come and engage with us. So, I, I did want to say that. But to me, that, that's, that's kind of secondary. For me, the sliding scale is, is a very good middle ground for kind of where we are now and sort of other, more drastic changes that could be made to address an underlying problem for me. And I'll, I'll, I'll let you know what that is in just a second. But, you know, other, other ways to address this around the changes in these communities is we can make these different kinds of schools. I mean, the schools are what they are now, but I, I have real concerns about how many magnet seats actually get taken versus neighborhood seats, how these schools are affecting the, who can buy homes in these neighborhoods? I have real questions about these. And so, as opposed to saying that we need to change what this school is, and I, I don't want to change what this is, I think we have some very good things happening, I think a sliding scale is a, is a very good hybrid, is a very good in-between ground towards reaching our goal of more equity across the district and keeping what is great about these two schools. And so, you know, the, the underlying issue for me, and Steve, I just kind of like to, to piggyback on, on your story because I, I kind of see, see myself. My daughter goes to a school where she's the only, you know, white student in her kindergarten class. And I raise that because we have seven, eight elementary schools that are so close to 100% economically disadvantaged that we don't, we don't keep track anymore. We, we do universal breakfast, universal lunch for everybody. And these two programs, being completely locally funded, are an issue for me when we have so many students that are in high needs. And that's why the, the hybrid, right, the middle ground for me is important, that we don't undermine what's good and happening, but we are being responsible with our local dollars to all the schools, especially schools that don't often come and speak to us at board meetings. And so, that's, that's what's underlying this for me. And, and while I think, you know, taking more time and more analysis is, is an important question, I have supreme confidence in our staff to address some of the logistical challenges around what are, what are going to be those costs. And I can cite, for example, that we charge and do some income verification around before and after-school care right now. And we have answers for what happens if you aren't able to pay. We do subsidize some of that. And so, we have some of these logistical back, backbones to kind of go from. And I think there is space for our administration to better work with the communities around these things and answer some of the questions that have been asked tonight and also partner as you do that. Because clearly, we have folks that don't feel that, that there was partnership in And so, so for me, I, I do think this is a good step and I'm, a pause means a pause for a year. And I'm not prepared to pause for a year when we have communities that are in need of, of increased investment. And I'd like to end with an encouragement for everyone to capitalize upon some of the communication avenues we have right now, including the YouTube, because we have a board retreat coming up on November 9th where I know we're going to be talking in more detail about where we're going with universal pre-K. And everyone who's been in the room tonight will really benefit from, from observing that conversation. I don't think we'll have public comment at that meeting, but we, we take public comment all the time, email, phone calls, and we, I, I, I want that public comment. Thanks.
Okay, so I, I had a couple of specific, I guess, questions that I might need. I don't know if we have the answers here, maybe we do, I don't know. So, with, with both, both schools, let me make sure I'm correct, is there, there's a walk zone where you automatically get into?
Oh, both schools have a-
I'm, I'm, I'm just asking.
Sorry. Both schools have a priority zone.
Okay.
So, those families, they have a priority zone and then there's also a sibling priority for both of those schools. So, typically, we see those seats filled by that priority zone for both schools.
Okay, and the priority zone and then the-
Sibling preference.
Sibling preference.
And sibling applying preference.
Okay. So, with those two populations, how many seats, do you know how many seats were opened for general lottery?
Well, there's a general, roughly around 100 seats. And if you split them respectfully, respectively across both schools, Morehead being a little bit smaller, ends up being around 36 at Morehead and about 57 at Watts.
Open seats for?
For applicants. So, Donna probably can expand on this with me, but typically, we would probably want to explore some of those trends to see what that applicant pool looks like. But typically, what we've seen is that the students, we've got a very diverse applicant pool, but the students that are seated are primarily from that priority zone at both schools.
That's accurate. We receive about 800-
Yeah.
-pre-K applications for both of those schools combined. We have roughly about 95 seats. And I would say 98 to 99% of those seats are taken from sibling attending and then the priority zone.
Okay.
Who lives in the priority zone? Like what, the demographics of the people that live in that area? I don't know if you know the answer. Or like, who ends up in those seats?
Right.
Are you talking specifically about pre-K seats or-
Pre-K, the pre-K.
Pre-K through five.
Yeah, the pre-K. So, if they get into Watts as a pre-K student, they stay there for the next five years. You're thinking about diversity, like who are the people who are getting those automatic seats?
Okay. So, I can just give you an example from this past year, for the 16, 17 school year. For George Watts, we had 58 seats, pre-K seats. Seven of those seats went to African-American students, 14 went to Hispanic students, two went to multi-students, and 35 went to white students.
Okay.
And that breakdown is very similar at Morehead as well.
Right. And so, the, the reasoning from my line of comment is, we, we had a lot of public commenters talking about the decrease in diversity, right? And our seats are being taken by priority zone and sibling preference.
Right.
Right? And so, when I look at, I asked for some, I asked for information and it was really interesting to me that the white population was the only group that's increasing. So, what that tells me is that priority zone is increasingly being white.
Right.
And sibling.
Yes.
Right? But at the same time, the, the white population is the only population that is decreasing through the fifth grade. Okay? So, you know, go, going from pre-K, going from pre-K up to fifth grade each year, the white population goes down, whereas black and Hispanic population is increasing. So, what that's telling me is, the reason we have such a preference is for pre-K. And they're leaving, not everyone obviously, but there's a large population leaving.
I think, I think it's different, Mr. Lee. I think that it reflects the change in the neighborhood.
Right, yes.
Is that if you look, because it really is, the kindergarten through fifth grade is a six-year history of that neighborhood.
Right.
And the neighborhood has decreased, the, the increased the number of white kids in the neighborhood. So, that's reflected, reflected in the kindergarten, I mean, the pre-K class.
That would parallel socio-economically as well.
Can I, if I could, just, just on that point, I, I think it's important not to necessarily equate the applications we get with the demographics in the neighborhood. I think there's some question around how well we are getting information into the entire area so that the demographics of the neighborhood don't necessarily equal the demographics of our pool of applicants.
Right, but if we only have space for a very small number-
Right, but I guess what I'm trying to get at is that, in terms of increasing diversity, one way to do that, and it was where I would want to work with the school community, is to, if the demographics in the community are different than the application pool, is to work harder with the school to get the applications into the, the entire neighborhood so that we get an application pool that better reflects the actual demographics of the neighborhood.
And that's the, and that's the work that can happen. You, you increase, I mean, you work to increase the diversity of the pool. And then, the law of averages, you know, is that, and you stop picking them out, if there are more Latinos, more African-Americans in the pool, then they'll be more selected.
Yeah, the, the applicant pool actually does reflect our population. Yes, it does.
And the comprehensive magnet applicant pool. So, it parallels pretty closely what our, what our demographic makeup is across all magnet applications. And twofold to that is our work with our magnet coordinators at each school to strategically target market. So, I know a lot of conversation has been around, you know, our, our communication and, and beefing that up. And some of the conversations we've had with the coordinators have been such that, that word is getting out to that priority zone that is lower income or possibly minority. So, it's grassroots marketing and making sure that they're aware of their opportunity to apply and that they are in that priority zone. And I too have met with some, some groups to talk about that, to talk about, this is where you are in the priority zone and you do have a priority to apply to this school and receive a seat. So, we do see the demographic makeup closely match what we've seen in a comprehensive applicant pool. And we have strategically marketed to try to make sure we're touching all of those populations because diversity is one of our magnet objectives.
But if we are targeting our marketing, how are we in and up with a pre-K with no African-American students in it? How does that happen?
When you're talking, you're talking, when you say that it reflects the, the applicant pool reflects the community, you're talking about all 40,000 applications.
Applications.
You're not talking about the applicant pool for the 58 seats at George Watts.
Not the greater Durham demographic makeup, but the applications across all of our magnet schools.
All of your magnet schools, but is it true that the applicant pool for George Watts, does it reflect the neighborhood?
Yes, because it's the priority zone. So, if you look at that zone, the greater portion of that is that, that, what is it, a mile radius? Half a mile radius around Watts. And that's where that shift has happened, where in the past, that, before gentrification, that, that neighborhood looked differently when Watts was created as a magnet school. So, as they've revived it, like Mr. Anru said, it's changed that dynamic. So, it's been a successful magnet in that way. So, that's shrunk and there are some pockets of higher poverty or in that priority zone. But again, we might want to look at that trend and that's something that did come up in the board's recommendations in the magnet review.
But, but to folks that had that concern here tonight, that is not a recommendation before this board to look at the priority zone for this year at least.
No. The, the pre-K sliding scale is completely in isolation of anything diversity-wise or academic.
I, I just see it as a very difficult issue to tackle, especially when the number of seats are not being represented by the priority zone, which we've defined here as pretty reflective of what the school looks like right now, and sibling preference, those few seats, the way we stand right now, if nothing is done, which is being proposed, not proposed, but being suggested, let's just wait, the number of, the number of seats is not going to grow. It's just going to shrink and shrink and shrink and then it's going to be a lock. Eventually, there's one or two seats for all these people who are applying. And whatever it takes, whatever we have to do, we, we have, we have to fix that because I know, I know of people who moved in that area specifically, you know, specifically for that. I know people who have rented apartments who don't live there because the apartment rent is cheaper than daycare, you know, outside, outside Watts, or wherever. Okay? There's, we have to do something about that because five years from now, if we're pausing, I'm not saying we'd pause for, for five years, but if we pause, if we don't do something to address this, not going to be a, a magnet school anymore because we're completely booked with a very gentrified priority zone and sibling preference.
So, so for me, it's, 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 that was one of the triggers for me that said that we need some, we need some reanalysis of our magnet programs, that, that, it was board action that sort of drove the creation of the magnet report. Last year, there were no magnet seats for pre-K for Watts, correct, Donna? Two, two years ago, okay? This past year, there were five, 10?
Yeah. All of, all the seats were filled by sibling attending and priority zone. I think there was one seat that went to general population.
Right. So, we've, we've now filled Watts for two consecutive years with no one from outside of the priority zone except for siblings.
Nobody getting an opportunity, right?
Correct. And to be fully funding that with local funds, in the, the pre-K climate that a lot of us are still living in and, and the costs that are associated with that, that is something that, that to me requires action. And Morehead is not there yet. There, there are still double-digit seats going, correct? Donna and I, you've talked about this a lot, double-digit seats going to the broader community. But it's still an issue for me. And, and it's an issue that, that for me makes the sliding scale sort of a middle ground between, you know, really reanalyzing what kinds of schools these are versus better supporting the, the investment that we're making there as opposed to investment that we could be making elsewhere.
It, it hurts me to see hands raised in the audience when we're not really in a position to be able to have that conversation. I appreciate Mr. Kason putting this timeline up. I don't know if it'll go back up. Because to me, when it did work-
She has to turn it on.
Yeah, yeah. It did say that this board approving this scale is just the start of this discussion. And when I heard comments from almost all of the Watson-Morehead family tonight, I heard you guys sharing the same goals that this board shares, which are equity and racial and social justice. And those are playing out very much within your school communities. And we're going to need your help figuring this out in, in the coming months and, and years to make sure that your community does reflect Durham and that your school community does in significant ways introduce and address the concerns of, of the, I don't like the achievement gap. What do I like? What's the language? What do you got, you know? That serves all children, that challenges all children, that, that gets all children together in a, in a school community that is representative of us. We've talked, you know, we talked about this years ago and we identified this issue. We said, well, maybe y'all don't need pre-K as an entry, or maybe Latino families aren't finding you all at pre-K, but we don't want to take pre-K away. That's, that's so fundamental to where we're trying to bring this community. We think school for children that, that struggle and any academic gaps, we think the best evidence-based solution is early childhood education. And so, that's why this, this scale is here. But it's here as a first step of this discussion. It's not the last step. And I feel like we're going to need y'all to help us and work with our, our staff as we figure these things out. But I do think that we can figure them out together and, and we're actually more united in this than, than it might feel like.
So, forgive, forgive the putting on the spot, Dr. Lum, but what, we, we have, I feel, we have sort of board-level questions and I feel like we have some administrative questions. What is the best avenue for some of these questions to be answered as we go forward?
As we go forward, we certainly, it is through Dr. Stacy Wilson Norman. It's also through their principal at the school. And I think that Dr. Norman is interested or has planned to be meeting with the school improvement team and others at Judge Watts already.
to be meeting with the school improvement team and others at George Watts already. So, I think that that would be important, that would be the important conduit of information.
The one thing I wanted to address that I saw in an email that kind of ruffled my feathers, and I'll just say it, was somebody used the word, "you're going to profit off our children." If we took these fees in, we're still not covering the cost of the pre-K at Watts and Morehead. And there's no profiting. There are still significant, significant local expenditures, you know, enriching your schools, and we're committed to doing that. But there's, that notion of profit just, I think, is a misstatement.
And I, my feeling is that some of the, I shouldn't have put this candy in my mouth. I'm sorry. My feeling is that some of the public commenters know that there are members of your community that actually support the sliding scale initiative. And if they haven't, I encourage you to work with your communities to find out who they are. We certainly have received emails, both when this came up two years ago when I came to a Watts PTA meeting and in recent weeks. So, while the public comment has kind of came in one direction, and tonight, this is a complex issue for our communities, and there are two and five, six, seven different sides to this. So...
Okay. So, any other discussion? Here and now, I'll entertain a motion for, is it information? Okay. All right. Vote on in the work session. Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do just want to say that I'm committed, and I know this whole board is committed to continuing this conversation around increasing the diversity at both these schools. And that I'll be talking, and I'm sure a number of us will be talking with parents after this meeting to see how we can work together on that.
Okay.
Can I also add? I think increasing diversity is important, but I also think equity is important. And I think that the sliding scale allows for us to think about how do we provide more pre-K options for lots of different children across the district that may not have that opportunity. And so, I think that diversity, we want to make sure our schools are diverse. We also want to make sure we have equitable opportunities for our students.
All right. Thank you all. That was a very good discussion. There's a very, very complex, very deep emotions on both sides, all sides, it's not two sides, it's all sides. And we have to, we definitely have to work together to get that solved. Okay, we are moving to the operational services and policy work session reports. Good evening.
I have the next two items, again, discussed at great length at the committee meeting. There were some editorial changes to the budget priorities and guiding principles. Those were changed and put in your material. I'll quickly highlight what was changed. In our second bullet point, the language, initial language was dropped, and the guiding principle was changed to DPS is dedicated to the principle of social justice and equity. No language prior to that. The guiding principle related to the salary study was changed to say, implement a salary study to determine fairness and equity in the pay levels of all positions across the district and compare within the larger community. And the last bullet item along the area of operational services, it was changed to say, review all operational expenditures to maximize efficiency and potential savings and continued emphasis on energy efficiency. So, after numerous discussions, those three points were asked to be changed, and I bring those to you tonight for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the 2017, 2018 budget priorities and guiding principles. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please use the same sign. It passes unanimously.
The next item was, just for informational purposes, the changes be brought back to you that were recommended again at the committee meeting for the fiscal year 2016, '17 budget calendar. What was changed in this calendar was the activity related around us delivering a draft budget to the county commissioners in March, and then the sequential things that will have to go on prior to that that meets our statutory requirement of a May 15th budget, but holding our budget hearing, taking the actual final budget to the community, then to the board in April, and then board approval in May. So, those changes were made based upon the comments, again, of not finalizing the entire budget process prior to March, but delivering a draft budget to the county commissioners in March, and then having the sequential activities after that to complete the budget process. This was just for informational purposes.
Any discussion? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Aaron. I will entertain a motion for closed session.
Is it listed on the first page of the agenda?
Yes.
Great. I'll do it. I've never done it.
You don't have to read it.
You don't have to? I think you do. Ken makes you read it, yeah.
No, you don't. You just say, "listed on the agenda."
Okay. I never got to read it.
Okay, you can read it. You can read it.
I move that we go into closed session to consider confidence personnel measures under NCGS 143-318.11A6 and 115C319, and to consult with the board attorney and to preserve the attorney-client privilege provided NCGS 319.11A3.
One second.
Second.
Wait, wait, wait. No, no, no.
I'm sorry.
Is there Frida Marsh here?
She was a parent here earlier. She was at the dinner.
Okay. I apologize. She signed up for public comment on the budget guiding principles and priorities, and I failed to see it. Ms. Marsh-
It was after about two hours ago.
Two hours ago? Oh, that was before.
We can email her, right?
Before this.
Ask her.
I'll email her and ask her for her information. I apologize. I missed that. It's been moved and properly seconded, Mr. Kason, that we go into closed sessions for the reasons Matt stated. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please use the same sign. We are in closed session.
Chairman Lee, members of the board, you have the personnel report dated October 27, 2015. It has 61 teacher appointments.
Move approval?
Second. It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the 61 teacher personnel report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Passes unanimously.
Chairman Lee, members of the board, you have the personnel report for administrators with one administrator for your review and approval.
Move approval?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the personnel report recommendation for the one administrator. Is that correct? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Chairman Lee, members of the board, you have the personnel report for contract extensions for 10 members of the senior staff for your review and approval.
Approval?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the contract extensions for the 10 senior staff members. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Aye. Passes 4-2. With that, we adjourn.